I don't know, he's ready.
You may have to do it a couple of times.
Maybe a couple of times. This is a rowdy crowd. All right. We're good to go.
Ready when you are.
Ready when you are.
All right. Okay, folks. I'm going to, with the little assistance, I'm sorry, your name?
Louis.
Louis is going to help me this evening call the meeting to order. So I'd like to hereby call the November 12th Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order.
All right, Louis.
Get your butt.
All right. He's got me beat on that.
Be better, Brad.
All right. Let's have, could you call it a pleasantries allegiance? I'm all flustered.
Our pleasantries to flag the United States of America and a super republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Budnick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenko.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Schmier.
Here.
All right, I think we'll go on to the soccer championship recognition. All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Presty, 115 Almpark Avenue. I was the head coach of the U-12 Pleasant Ridge Recreational Soccer Team along with Coach Pete Benner. Thank you so much. Yeah. This year for the Fall League, our team name was Team USA for a little Olympics that we started when that was over. And real quick, this rec league, it's pay to play. It's, you come out there, learn if you like the game, you know, not as serious as some other leagues, equal playing time as much as possible for everybody. And that's kind of what the goal is. So, you know, learning if you like it, if it's something you want to do as you get older. But obviously, when you're learning something new, you have to learn how to actually do it. So we do teach formation, what's your responsibility? And I think the reason why we did so well is everybody knew what their responsibility was, they executed it. And when your whole team does what they're supposed to do collectively, you do well as a team. And I think that's what we did this year for Team USA, so. I'll just call each player. Gentlemen and ladies, when I call your name, please come and kneel here in front for a photo. Ford Barber. George Barber. Eva Benner. Finn Downing. Reagan Jenner, excuse me, Reagan Jagger, not here. Louis Johnson. Desmond Kahler. Drake Kriziac. Stephen Malmmeister. Fred O'Keefe. Charlotte Presty. Blake Shipp's. Elliot Chips. And Harrison Zentak. Coach Pete, come on up, Coach Pete. And here's a ball assigned by all the players.
Did you have a?
Yep, it's right in front of Mayor Scott. Maybe we could just hold it up nice and high for the photo. Okay, we're going to take a couple of pictures. Everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
Soccer. Undefeated.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Awesome job.
I was wondering. I was wondering what that little thing was there.
I just noticed it.
Yeah, no, I saw it earlier and I was like, what is that?
If this meeting gets too rowdy.
Right, I'll just.
Throwing balls at people.
I literally just toss the ball at someone if it gets rowdy.
Well, you can't talk unless you're holding the ball, you know? Like that ball, a little. Lord of the flies. If it gets.
All right. All right, well, I think we'll move on to an equally exciting topic. Our financial statements.
Not quite as exciting as the previous presentation there, but.
It's because they haven't heard the numbers yet.
Oh. My name is Dane Porter. I'm a senior manager with Mayor Castorison. We're the auditors for the city. And I just wanted to attend tonight and present the results of the June 30, 2024 financial audit. So you've each received a little packet that I plan to go over, some various slides, excerpts from our auditor's opinion letter. So should be able to follow along on the pronouns you have there, or we'll have a, I think on the, yeah, okay, bro. So independent audit report, the piece of the audit that we consider to be ours is going to be on pages one through three of the financial statements. I'm going to go over some of the key paragraphs from that auditor's report focusing on our opinion and then our responsibility for the statements, and also your responsibility as management. So with that, the first section of the auditor's report there is the opinion. We've expressed a unmodified opinion on your financial statements, highest level of assurance that we can give, basically meaning that there's no modifications to it. Everything is presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. So it's what you want to see, it's what the state wants to see, any grant sources, things like that. So again, it's a nice, clean opinion, no modifications. The third section of the auditor's report presents management's responsibility for the financial statements. So management being administration, and then also the commission is responsible for the preparation and the fair representation of the financial statements, which includes the design, the implementation, and the maintenance of your internal controls. And our responsibility for the financial statements is to express our opinion based on our audit. It's to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. I do like to remind you guys that the intent of the audit isn't necessarily designed or intended to detect fraud, but certainly if we made aware of anything during the audit that we were concerned with, we would share that with you. But nothing like that came to our attention. So with that, we'll get into the financial statements. We're going to focus mainly on the general fund, being the primary operating fund for the city. So these will be on pages 12 and 14 of the financial statements, starting with the balance sheet on page 12, and then the revenues, expenses, I'm sorry, revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance on page 14. So balance sheet, again, focusing mainly on the general fund. Page 12 of the financial statements, snapshot of your financial condition as of close of business on June 30, 2024. Your total fund balance was $2,676,160. There are five possible combinations of fund balance. There's non-spendable, there's restricted fund balance, there's committed fund balance, assigned and unassigned fund balance. The city currently only reports fund balances in non-spendable, representing things that have already been spent, inventory, prepaid, and then also unassigned fund balance. So you currently have unrestricted fund balance or spendable fund balance of about 71% of your annual expenditures and other financing sources and uses. So again, 71% is a very healthy fund balance. Next page there, page 14 of the financial statements is going to be your revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, again, focusing mainly on just the general fund. Your total revenues, about $4,073,372. It's about a 5% increase over the year before. Total expenditures, $3,535,064. Again, about a 6% increase over the prior year. Other financing sources and uses, you transferred out about $151,000. Then you had minor proceeds from sale of capital assets, about $4,000, netting to about $146,688. Bottom line here is that your fund balance increased $391,620. Next page is going to be a little five-year presentation, focusing just on the general fund again. The blue pieces of the chart there representing the total revenues, the burgundy being the total expenditures and other financing uses, and then the yellow bars representing your total fund balance. As you can see, the blue bars have exceeded the burgundy bars over the past five years. So you've added to your fund balance in each of the past five years. Next pie chart here represents the composition of the general fund revenues. Largest revenue source at about 69%, being property taxes. And then the second largest piece, actually probably a tie, or historically usually the second largest piece being intergovernmental, that'll be your state share revenue, any state or federal grants, that's about 9% this year. So overall, very, very similar composition to past years. Everything is within about one or two percentage points of the previous year, so very consistent with last year. Similarly, for the expenditures, this graph here represents the composition of your general fund expenditures for the year. Again, very consistent with the year before, largest category of expenditures being public safety, the police department, at about 51% of your annual expenditures. Second largest is general government, 24%, being building and grounds, administration, things like that. Again, very consistent with the year before. Next graph here is going to be your unrestricted or your unassigned fund balance as it relates to your annual expenditures. As you can see, the lowest point back in 2020, about 41%. The highest point being the current year, 2024, at about 71%. And then next graph here represents that same graph in terms of dollars, looking at the blue being where the city is currently, and the red graph being where the GFOA would recommend the minimum fund balance based on your annual expenditures would be. So you can see that you're exceeding that in each of the past five years, so very healthy fund balance. That's all I plan to go over. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts?
I'd say thoughts, Mayor, is that the work the city has done over the past years, it's been very intentional and thoughtful, and we can see the trajectory in how healthy the balance sheet is, especially regarding the general fund. And so for municipalities that are much larger, they can eat up a cost of a sinkhole swallowing Mayor Scott's classic car. Being a small municipality, it's in our best interest, it behooves us to have a healthier rainy day fund. And it's just been great that we've set out to do this, and now we've talked about the 75% and here we are. It seems like forever ago. That said, it's great and thank you. Your, Dane, your presentation was equally as exciting.
I doubt that, but thank you.
Equally as important.
Yes.
The, you know, and one of the other parts that, you know, looking at the larger audit section, like that we got in our packet earlier, is it really went into the, you know, our largest expense is the police and the public safety. And so it's like with all the residents coming together too, we really appreciate that, you know, you guys understand, you know, you know what you want. You want, you know, this, our own police force, you want people who are taking care of the city. And that helped really take care of, you know, the unfunded balance with the pensions and things like that, and that's made a huge difference in the bottom line as well. So thanks to everybody. And yeah, that was a lot of good hard work.
And we work very hard to try to find other sources of revenue beyond taxes. It was 70%, I think is the number that I saw. The other 30% came from other sources, just really good for a city.
Yeah.
That is almost entirely residential. We work very hard to try to make it as easy as possible for people that live here and not have to pay the full brunt of what we like.
Yeah, the grants and things that you have been able to get over the past years have been, it's made a huge difference.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We may need a motion.
Mayor, I move the audit of the city council, or the city financial statements for fiscal year ending June 2024 be received and filed. Second?
All right, any other thoughts? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Lenko.
Yep.
Commissioner Budnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier.
Yes.
Mayor Scott.
Yes, the motion carries.
Thanks, Dane.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, June.
All right, we'll move on to public discussion, the items that are not on the agenda. That might be you.
Yeah, Ted. Welcome back.
Yes.
Thank you. I thought everybody else, the hero was going to speak first. Ted Zachary from 68 Devonshire. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, staff, viewers. I have about three things to mention about, one of them is about storytelling. Storytelling is going to resume in Pleasant Ridge, and it's going to be the, just before the movie of the month at 11 o'clock. And we're going to see if that continues to be improving. But in Ferndale, we have storytelling going on. This month is the ninth month that it's going on, and we meet every week instead of just once a month. Maybe that's the key, I'm not sure, but I'm working on that. And it's going really well, I'm really surprised. We get about average eight, nine people each Thursday. And anybody is welcome to come, any city. One other thing that I'm working on is sign language. I'm going to try to get that going. And Mayor Scott, when you go to the school board meetings, I was wondering if you could find somebody that I could talk to about sign language.
Sure.
Maybe there's a connection. Oh, another thing that I'm going to be working on is kitchen compost, to see if we could have it here in Pleasant Ridge. I'm going to get information first. It's going well in Ferndale and in Royloke. I found out that in Royloke, you could have it dropped off on Sunday, Saturday morning at the, what was that?
The farmer's market.
Farmer's market, thanks. Okay. I like your visual aid that you have over here that was presented. And now it's my turn for a visual aid. I have two visual aids, actually. One of them is a little sheet of paper that says all the benefits of storytelling. And I'll give this to Shawnee so she could put that on the board so you could read it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the drumroll, the results of the butternut squash competition. I had, there was a competitor, it was a very close call. He had 50 pounds, I had 67 pounds.
Wow.
For one squash?
No.
That was for the grand total. Thank you. But I, so I declare myself as the butternut squash champion.
So he came in second?
Mike K. came in second.
Oh, okay.
So this is my visual aid.
Wow.
And anybody could grow this. This year I didn't have a chance to water very well, but I still had a large, if anybody needs seeds, just give me a call.
Thank you.
That's beautiful.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Ted. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to ask a quick question on the food compost. Do you know, do they offer it all year round, or is it only during the months when, you know, standard compost is available?
I'll be finding out more information, I'll give a report soon.
It sounds like, yeah, all year.
I think it's.
Okay, that's convenient.
That's what I thought, too.
Thank you.
But I'll give, I'll bring back more information.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other items for public discussion that are not on the agenda?
Mayor, could, Victoria Plain was going to make a report and she is ill, so could I give a very, it's very quick.
Sure.
And it's good at this time. There are two upcoming events. The Women's Club is having a pasta dinner. It's a community dinner on Friday night. It is one of those great events. It's $10 a head for adults, $5 for kids under 12, and nothing if they're under three, I think if they're three or younger. But it is, it's a great way just to come together, and it's a community tables up there, and you get, you know, spaghetti and sauce and salad and things like that. But it is, it's just a great night. You can bring your own bottle of wine, and it's just a really nice way to sort of meet some new and different neighbors. So come up if you can. It's this Friday, November 15th, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, up at the community center, and it's a fundraiser also for the Women's Club, who all of their funds go towards scholarships for the kids in the area. And then the other thing is mark your calendars and sign up soon, because this does always sell out, is the Pleasant, is the Pleasant Ridge Garden Club hosts, and this is one of their big fundraisers, which helps them plant all the beautiful flowers that you see like around in Memorial Garden and in Memorial Park and many other places. It's the Holiday Greens Workshop, and that is Wednesday, December 11th, 6:30 PM. It's $50 for members, $60 for non-members, and you make a really beautiful, they help you make a really beautiful basket centerpiece for the holidays. And it is, it's a ton of fun. People, it's sort of the same thing to BYOB and, you know, bring your own, also your own scissors to trim your greens, and it's a really nice evening. They serve appetizers and everything to all the attendees, and you come away with a ton of fun and a really lovely centerpiece. Shawnee or City Hall can help you sign up as well as you, even if you call, they can help give you a phone number or the Venmo and everything like that. So hopefully, that one's on December 11th, 6:30 PM, it's a Wednesday, so hopefully both those events. I just wanted to make sure while we still have a crowd, we got that in. So thank you.
Isn't there, I'm sorry to interrupt, isn't there a junior greens festival this year?
There is, and I forgot to.
Okay, there is something for kids, too. I don't know. December 19th, so.
For the kids.
For juniors. And the greens is my favorite. I always get a centerpiece and I put it on my porch, and it actually lasts most of the winter.
And it's, yeah, it's really, it's a fun evening.
Yeah.
And there's very limited spots left, too.
Okay. So sign up soon.
And if I may add to the Women's Club event, I know there's a 50/50 raffle, so just wanted to throw that out there for anybody who's interested. I don't think you have to be in attendance to win, so.
And at the Women's Club, at the Garden Club, they have baskets to bid on.
Great baskets.
Great baskets, 12 of them. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Were there any other items for public discussion? Okay, we will move on to the liaison report. Oh, me first. For Ferndale Public Schools, I'm thinking, who's here?
Jackie Hart.
There's Jackie. Yes, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am Jackie Hart. I am a trustee on the Board of Education at Ferndale Public Schools, and I'm also a Pleasant Ridge resident. So I've got three things I want to update you all on tonight about what's happening in the district. We are in our fifth year of our strategic plan, and it expires this year. So we are starting the process of our new dynamic strategic plan process, and we would encourage the community and our stakeholders, our parents and our families to participate so that we can get your feedback to know what the community wants to see in our district in the next five years. So if you check out our website at ferndaleschools.org, you'll see a schedule where we are encouraging participants to give feedback virtually or in person. So starting November 18th through the 27th, we have a consultant who will be in the district working with the administration team to get feedback. So again, just come out, look at the website, and see how you can contribute. Second thing I wanted to update everyone on is our marching band. We have an award-winning high school marching band, and this year they finished in third place at the beginning of the month in the Michigan Competing Band Association competition. We're extremely proud of them every year, and we are even more proud that they placed in the top three.
That's awesome.
Great.
Yes. And then lastly, I wanted to update you on our girls varsity volleyball team. Tonight, well, first of all, they won the district championship, and they finished the season with an 11-4 record. Tonight, they went on to play regionals at 5:00 PM tonight against Edison Academy. Unfortunately, they lost by one point.
Oh.
In the fifth game. So we are extremely proud of the girls, and this was the first year for the coaches. So we're really excited about what can happen next year, and we hope that the coaching team stays with us so that we can see them make it to the finals next year and win.
That's exciting. I think one of our neighbors is one of the coaches, right? Jill?
Yes.
That's so exciting.
Yeah. So that's all my report for tonight. Anything, any questions and comments, feedback? Nope.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's some really good things happening on the, in the district right now.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to Commissioner Lenko for planning.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Scott. So Planning DDA, we had a workshop last month, recognized a lot of faces, we're at that meeting. So we're in the final phases before we're presented with the draft and the final master plan to send to City Commission. So next Monday, the 18th, at 7:00 in these chambers, will be the next DDA Planning Commission meeting, where McKenna is going to present the final, final draft. There'd been multiple iterative steps throughout the process, but don't fear, there's still plenty of time to add comments, et cetera, throughout the, throughout the next couple of months. So once the Planning Commission submits the draft, or submits the final draft to City Commission, City Commission approves it, then there's like a 90-day waiting period when it's open for review. So perhaps we'll be approving it spring, early summer of next year. So more to come on this, and if anybody's interested in joining us next Monday, 7:00 in these chambers. Thanks.
PR plans that they can see, isn't it Pleasant Ridge Plans? PleasantRidgePlans.org? So I was just, sorry to add on, but if anyone wants to review and see any of the documentation and information from all of the past meetings, PR- and information from all of the past meetings, PRplans.com, PleasantRidgePlans.com or PRplans?
Pleasant Ridge Plans.
PleasantRidgePlans.com has all of the meetings, all of the data, so you can catch up on anything that you have, may have missed.
Seriously?
Sorry, it was just my head.
It's okay.
You have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
This is for Historical Commission.
Historical Commission. Now that I have an audience, I'm going to ask all of you, if you have any pictures, any information, anything on your homes that is not in your home file, please bring it to the museum. You can bring hard copies. You can also email it to PleasantRidgeHistorical, or historical@, God, I'm losing it, historical@cityofPleasantRidge.org. And we're always just trying to get information for your, for your home files. You know, people come to the museum, and future people are gonna come to the museum and love to see information and pictures from your homes. So, if you have any old pictures, new pictures, any pictures, any information, please share it, because that's what the Historical Commission wants, and that's what, you know, that's what they do, to just maintain records of your homes. A couple other things. The museum will be open November 16th, which is a Saturday, 10 until 12. It will also be open December 2nd for, during the tree lighting. The Christmas Village is gonna be set up again this year, so December 2nd, tree lighting, December 10th, before the City Commission meeting, and December 21st. So, the Christmas Village is always such a great, I mean, it's just cool to see, so definitely come by and see it. Beyond that, we will be, our 100-year tiles, for people who pre-ordered them, we should be getting them in the next month. So, keep an eye out for letters. It probably won't be for another 30 days, and I'll give an update at the next meeting. But if you did order a tile, or if your house is 100 years old and you want a tile, be aware that they will be available in about 30 days. And that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Budnick for the recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. The Recreation Commission met October 30th, and they meet quarterly. A few highlights from that meeting were Jane from McKenna, who Commissioner Lenko just brought up regarding the planning process and the different iterative points of that. This was one of them. The Rec Commission went through some of the data from McKenna, and a few highlights were, the input, number one, from residents was outperformed, or it outperformed, rather, all the metrics, which is very encouraging to see the engagement of the community, and it's not a surprise here.
Cool.
Yeah. Our parks are in great shape, but another thing that's not really a huge surprise, we have really well-kept parks, and I think Gainsborough being the flagship of those, which was part of this type of process roughly 10 years ago. So, really, what they've identified so far is that it's, the community wants passive types of additions, so not complete overhauls of parks, but just little additions and things that we can do to improve the existing spaces we have. So, exciting stuff, no major changes, but they're definitely looking at things and taking all data into consideration, so more to come on that. And also, the, there's a teen council that met before the Rec Commission, which is really neat. So, those of you that have teenagers, or maybe tweens that are about to be at that point, really cool way to get involved and get an idea of how this, how this type of process works, and meet some others in the community, and, yeah, it's a really, really cool thing that, that we got going on. So, there were 15 members that came to...
No way.
Yeah. Night before Halloween. Look at that. So, that was, that was pretty neat. Furthermore, the highly anticipated tree lighting ceremony is gonna be Monday, December 2nd, 6:00 PM at Memorial Park. Typically, the police brings in Santa, I believe, right? Typically, so, big excitement there for the kids, or it depends, yeah. So, welcome to Spirit of the Season with your family, friends, and neighbors, and Santa, so stay for photos with Santa, which is always, always a favorite. Cookies and cocoa with Santa are going to be Thursday, December 5th. That is also at 6:00 PM, so join in on the holiday fun with Santa cookies, holiday crafts, and the space is limited on this one. The toddlers, 2 and under, are free, and for this one, you must be pre-registered. So, if you have interest in that, please go on. There aren't gonna be sales at the door, so you have to pre-register for that one. Gingerbread house making will be Wednesday, December 23rd, and that'll be at 10:30 in the morning. Cost for this is 15 bucks, and this is a drop-off event for kids that are K through six. Sounds great. Coats for the cold is going on, so drop off those coats that you'd like to donate or no longer need. That's going on until 11:30 at the community, 11:30 the date, November the 30th, going on, and drop those off at the community center or City Hall, and those are for gently-used coats. For all seasons and all sizes are welcome. Treats for the troops. 177 pounds of candy collected.
Wow.
Good job, everybody.
I can't eat all of it. And last but not least, we're trying very hard to get this following program off the ground. It's Bridge and Table Games are every Friday at 10:00 AM, so anybody interested, holler at the Rec Team. Shawnee works very hard with her team to continue all the programming we have, which is constantly changing, ever interesting, and we appreciate all the work. So, next Rec Commission will be, I think, end of January. That'll be the last Wednesday in January, which will be the 29th, if anyone would like to join us.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Are you sure?
No.
All right. Commissioner Perry and the Arts Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
The Arts Council did not meet in October, but the work continues, and we are scheduled to meet on Wednesday, November 20th, at 4:30 PM, right here at City Hall. The group will discuss the framework plan for the Arts Council, and so that, it's exciting, what's coming up. They've, we've done lots of good, hard work. Our consultant, we're looking forward to what he, how he is going to bring all of our different opinions and everything together, so it'll be fun. And, and everyone, too, because it's taken all the public input as well. So, it's very exciting. So, October, so November 20th, 4:30, right here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll move on to governmental reports. First up, fire.
I feel like it's been a while since I've been here. I apologize for my absence. It's been crazy. So, I always want to remind people, change of seasons, furnaces are coming on, fireplaces are getting, you know, fired up. Strongly encourage everybody to have carbon dioxide detectors in every bedroom and every level of your house, because when you're sleeping, you're sleeping, you're not gonna feel the symptoms if there is something. So, it's strongly, strongly recommended. If you have a wood burning fireplace, have it checked, have it cleaned annually to make sure it's safe, so you don't have a fire, because those fireplaces are great, but you don't want it to cost you your house. And then this time of year, everybody's raking their leaves into the street for the cleanup. Do not park your cars on top of piles of leaves, a hot engine, dry leaves, bad combination, unless you really want a new car, then maybe you wanna do it, but I don't know if insurance will pay. But just, people don't realize the danger of that. And the other thing that we're seeing is kids playing in the pile of leaves in the streets, which is extremely dangerous. So, for parents, please discourage that. If you wanna let your kids play in the piles of leaves, keep it in your yard, but make sure they know once they're on the street, don't do that, because cars can't see them, and we definitely don't want, you know, something bad to happen. So, we wanna keep everybody safe. So, there's all my safety things, because I wanna keep everybody safe and have a wonderful season. The other exciting news, the new engine that we ordered is here to replace our, yeah, to replace our 1996 engine. So, the 1996, I'll be selling, or I'm figuring out what I'm doing with it, but that's going away. So, 28 years old, but the new one is here. We're finalizing everything, it will be put into service. So, maybe for the tree lighting, I'll try to bring it here and have it here, so everybody can see it.
That's awesome.
And then, the, and one of the coolest things with that is, this one, we added Class A foam. We've never had that. And so, it's not PFAS, it's very safe, it's biodegradable, there's no environmental hazards, but it allows us to, it kinda makes water wetter, so we could put fires out faster to reduce water damage. It also pulls a lot of toxins out of the air, so it makes air better, reduces our exposure to all the bad stuff we're exposed to. So, it has a lot of benefits with all the early research and things that's done. So, this will be our first vehicle that has that capability on it, so it's pretty exciting.
Wow.
And our new ambulance should be here still before the end of the year. It's been quite, we ordered before the engine, and it's taken longer. It's crazy with the supply chain. So, that'll replace our 2004 ambulance. So, upgrade that. So, we'll get that stuff here and have some great new stuff for, serve our communities.
All right.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions for me.
All right.
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to police.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank the residents for giving out full-size candy bars at Halloween. Kept our officers busy throughout the entire night, but Halloween went great. I'm sure you saw our officers driving around, they had the cruise lights on, so it was kinda more visible, so that you can see them. Just wanted to touch on a few things. First one is, we're getting more and more residents turning left at Cambridge at Oxford in the morning from 7:00 to 9:00, because they say, oh, well, Roosevelt's closed, it doesn't matter anymore. No, the sign's still there. The Oxford residents don't want a million cars coming down the street, so please keep that in mind. Our officers are out there regularly. Every month, it seems that I end with, please lock your doors to your cars, please lock the doors to the houses. We've had some people not locking doors and leaving keys in the car, and we had a vehicle stolen, so...
Not stolen.
So...
Yes.
Please keep locking those cars. Lock the houses. Other than that, our officers are out there on patrol and here for any questions that you may have.
So, are you saying it was taken and not stolen, because the key is in a...
If you leave your keys in the car, it wasn't necessarily stolen.
Well, in the same parking lot, there was a, let me touch on one other issue. If you do have items that people would probably wanna steal in your car, please take them out of your car or hide them in the car. We had a handbag that was stolen that was in an unlocked car, sitting on the seat, so...
Oh.
So, that one actually was stolen.
Hmm.
I did notice the, the police were very visible Halloween, just walking around. Yeah, they were, they were everywhere. Yeah. We, we, we need to be. Lot of people in town for that, but it's a good time.
I will recommend to people, and this happened to me, my Ring doorbell had disconnected from Wi-Fi. So, if you have a Ring doorbell, just check to make sure that it's actually sending video. I didn't realize mine had disconnected. So, just something to do if you have Ring or other Wi-Fi doorbells.
Yeah, if something does happen, we do have a Ring portal for the Police Department, where we could geofence a certain area, contact the people with the Ring doorbells during that time, and say, hey, we're looking for something, would you please give us access to that? And it'll send it if there's something. If you had no activations on your Ring doorbell at that time that we're looking for, it won't even notify you. So, it is one more tool that we have, but, yeah, we do appreciate it if they're charged, so, yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved. Second?
Any discussion? Could we take a vote?
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay. On to item 10, the one that most of you are here for. The 36 Ridge lot split. Would you like to have something to say?
Yeah, I'll just, go ahead.
Just, by the way, a brief introduction before we hand it over. This is before the City Commission tonight, because what's proposed is the split of an existing platted lot. It's an original 200-foot wide lot, now 180 feet, because some of it was taken for Norwich in the long ago, past. But the proposal is to take existing 36 Ridge and existing 1A Norwich, and to do a boundary adjustment on the existing vacant Norwich lot, and to split 36 Ridge into an 80 and a 100-foot wide lot. Not at question tonight, just to, to address this, I think, head-on, not, not at question is demolition of the existing house. That's a separate item that can continue with or without approval of the lot split. So, we do not have anything that prevents demolition of a house, so trying to deny a lot split based on preservation of a house is, is not, not something that will be on the table tonight. There's a report on the, whether or not this meets a criteria of Section 6621 of the City Code. I can go over those at the end, but I think it's probably best to turn it over to the applicant, let them describe their request, and we'll go from there.
Yes, please.
All right. Hello, everybody. How's it going? Thank you very much, Mayor Scott, and the City Commission and the city administration, and actually, everyone else from Pleasant Ridge that's here for this conversation. We're the Neils, and so I'm Chris Neal. This is my wife, Ashley Neal, and we're joined by our two partners, Greg Lamarcio of Lamarcio Homes, as well as Jeff Clatt of Krieger Clatt Architecture. And so, I guess the reason we're all here today is for many reasons. My wife and I are two kids, and we have a, we have a six and a four-year-old named Noah and Amelia, and we've been more or less trying to live here for a long time. And so, you know, Pleasant Ridge is a very unique community, and it's something that, you know, we've spent, you know, a lot of our time when we lived in Ferndale, because we started living there in 2013, you know, we, we spent a lot of time walking through the neighborhood, seeing the quality of the neighborhood, seeing, you know, the quality of the people, you know, the quality of the lawns, what people are trying to present and saying, you know, this is the community we wanna live in, and then projecting that to the rest of the community. And we see that and say, that'd be pretty cool to do, too. I'd love that. And so, for a while, we just, you know, we kinda muse about it, and our joke was always, we'd move north of 9, right? We lived at West Hazelhurst, so we were just on Allen, basically, at eight and a half mile. And so, you know, one of these days, you know, north of 9 was kinda the goal. And so, what was funny was, you know, we, we first started walking our dog, and, you know, we'd look at that and say, that house is beautiful, or something like that. And then, eventually, we started walking our kids in strollers, and, you know, as that all goes. And I remember in, like, 2017, 2018 or so, we were starting to realize that, with my son being born, that maybe we need to change around our, you know, where we're living. We should probably expand, or, you know, maybe just kinda consider a different house. And so, we started looking around, and we came up with, you know, a couple of communities we wanted to live in, and we actually created like this, like rubric and all these different numbers, and we said, you know, I will apply something to all these different things that matter to us, and then the highest number will be where we really start looking. And it was funny, because it all ended up being, like, Pleasant Ridge. And so, we're like, oh, I guess our completely made-up rubric ended up guiding us where we thought we'd wanna be anyway. And so, we started looking around, and actually, we, we thought, maybe, you know, if, as we kept looking at houses, bidding, not necessarily getting them, and, you know, kinda realizing that it's, it's gonna be difficult, maybe we should build something. And so, we actually looked at 1A Norwich. We had it under contract for about two months, and I think, as the City Commission's probably aware, what happens with that lot is you start to get into the process, you know, it's It was about two months of due diligence, and then everyone's journey ends when they stand around the lot with the DTE man who says, "Well, you have to be this far off the power line, and because this candle lever's back this way, you basically have to build a house that's nowhere near what you thought you would build." And you say, "I don't know if I want to do that." And so unfortunately, that's been kind of the story of that lot for the last decade. And so we decided, maybe we'd table that for a little bit and look around. Then we have another child on the way in 2020, and it's the spring of 2020, and we're really thinking about it. We still haven't found anything. And honestly, we're probably a little picky when it comes down to it, so we continue to look for something that kind of met what we were looking to do. And we realized, eh, now we're in Ferndale, and we've got another on the way, and maybe we need to just really move on something. And so we ended up actually building a house in Royal Oak. And so we moved a little further north of 9:00 than we thought we would, and we ended up north of 696. And we kind of did that in a way that... It was funny, because Jim Schaefer was our Realtor, and he could always say it was like, it was heart-wrenching to actually leave the community we love. Because we fell in love with that community, and Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, up and down this Woodward corridor. We're very involved in going downtown to the festivals, realising our neighbors, and things like that. We've made a lot of friends. And so it was always kind of a half-hearted decision. And so over the last couple of years, we've been kind of musing about different ways that we can accomplish our goal of kind of coming back home, as we would say it. And I think this presents kind of an opportunity that really matched a lot of what we were looking to do. And I think, as we go through all this, a bunch of different data points that I think, hopefully, we can kind of assure the board, or the Commission and things like that, that what we're looking to do is, to the benefit of the community, architecturally, the benefit of the community with what we're trying to kind of put in place. And I think it's been a process getting up to this point. I want to thank Jim for a lot of the help of just kind of talking us through what the rules of the city are and the things that we need to be aware of, and how we need to work within the rules of what everyone has put in place. And so I think really, our goal with this house is we want to build something that matches, or at least tries to match, the architectural grandeur of the area, right? There's a lot of beauty in this area, and it's very well-kept, and it's a point of pride. And our goal, as we build this, is to build something, as people go by, it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. We're trying to save as many trees as we can, stuff like that. It kind of looks like it's already maybe been there for a while. Maybe it was just a nice remodel that added on a bit. And it's not necessarily a brand-new home that kind of screams, "This is a new build." And I think, because as you walk around this neighborhood, that's a lot of the charm that you see, right? You see houses that, by the nature of the city's design commission. There's the architectural standards that are required. People have had to work within those rules, and it's helped preserve kind of what's going on. And we very much ascribe to that. In fact, we think that's a benefit, right? That's a positive to even someone like me, where if you look at it and think, a lot of people start in carpalage saying, that can be intimidating, right, is you have to follow these rules, you have to do all these different things, and it can hamstring maybe what you could do with a build. And to me, I think that's great, because it means that what we'll be building and what anyone else could possibly build would probably be, at that point, up to snuff, of high-quality standard. And so I think, at this point, I'd love to turn it over to Jeff, because I know he's got a whole lot to cover when it comes to various elements of what we're doing.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Jeff Clatt with Krieger Clatt Architects, 400 East Lincoln in Royal Oak. And we're currently working with Chris and Ashley on the design of their dream home on the property. We'll discuss in a second here. And Jim, we do have a brief presentation that explains some of our... And my...
Doesn't matter.
Okay, there we go. Perfect. So again, we have a brief presentation that explains some of the rationale behind this. So again, we're very excited for this opportunity. And it's not that often you get to design a new house in Pleasant Ridge, so it's a great opportunity for us. And they're beautiful homes, charming neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods, so we're super excited for that opportunity. And about four or five years back, we had the good fortune to work with Mark and Mandy Morgan on the design of their whole house renovation over on 21 Poplar Park. So again, we understand the context of the neighborhoods, designing a home that fits, that's in place, that has great architectural detailing, historic detailing. So we understand the process, and we thoroughly enjoyed that, and we're hoping to do the same here, or even better. So that's our goal for the build of this lot here. And then, as was mentioned, Greg Lamarcio from Lamarcio Homes is here this evening as well. He's a selected contractor. And I've worked with contractors all throughout Oakland County, and Craig's work is second to none. His team is spectacular. And for a high-quality build like this, I mean, he definitely understands the attention to detail for historic homes, or for a traditional home of this magnitude. So we're thankful to have him on the team. So again, this presentation helps to explain some of the rationale behind the lot division that we're proposing. So let me get familiar with this. So again, as Chris mentioned, this is the subject property right here at the corner of Ridge and Norwich. So it's designated by the red boundary upon that. So just some of the goals for this. So what we, obviously, when we're working through this division, we want to make sure that all the various lots are compliant per the ordinance standards, which they are. Chris also mentioned, too, the issue on Norwich with the electrical lines. So we want to make sure we get that lot right. So this is an attempt to do that, and you'll see that here in our proposal. And again, to make sure that these lots are also consistent with the pattern, with the language on the streetscape, and we think our proposal does that. And then we'll have the opportunity to create three new beautiful homes on the streetscape. So before we get into the actual plan, we want to just provide a bit of context for this. So this is that lot that I mentioned, a little bit enlarged here. So again, it consists of these two parcels, 36 Ridge and 1A Norwich. And the overall width is about 180 feet wide by 265, plus the 50 for Norwich. So it's a very large lot, even from a Ridge Road standpoint. This was interesting. We were able to dig up the old plat maps, and this is one from 1906. And I think, as Jim mentioned, what this shows here is that these lots were obviously much larger than they were replatted at some point, but these are all 200 feet in width, almost 1,000 feet in depth. What I thought was interesting is that they're really trying to show that there was trying to be some balance, or trying to have lots that were consistent in size and width along Ridge Road. And over time, some of these are a little bit different and unique, but I think we have the opportunity to help that here. So what this shows here is the current... It's a little bit small, so I apologize for that, but that screenshot on the left, that snippet on the left, is really Ridge Road, from Elm Park to the north, to Cambridge to the south. So what that shows is all the various parcels on those three blocks. And these, and I can't even see that up there, but these range in size from 80 feet to 110 feet, one at 55 feet. And again, the anomaly here is the lot that Chris and Ashley purchased was 180 feet wide, which is highlighted by the yellow in the star on the screen. So what this shows, that the text on the right shows, is that the average of all these lots is roughly 85 feet in width. So what we're proposing here is a lot that's 100 feet. That would be the parcel to the north, which is the one that Chris and Ashley would build their home on. And then we have, the other lot would be about 80 feet in width, too. So again, both of those are compliant from an ordinance standpoint. They meet all the restrictions from area, acreage, and lot dimensions, too. And this is just a snapshot of Norwich itself. So there's that lot that we mentioned. And that dash line, which should be parallel, represents the extra five feet that we would add to that lot to compensate for the easement for the power lines. So again, I think it's helping to right a wrong in that scenario, to build another home that's compliant and contextual of the neighborhood. I won't bore you with this page. This is really a zoning analysis, and what this shows is that all the lots that we are suggesting here will meet all the ordinance requirements from a setback, lot coverage standpoint. It just gets into the nitty-gritty with the details for each lot. So this is what we're proposing for the property itself. And I just want to point out, too, that we're suggesting home sites or footprints on the lot, which are those gray rectangles you see. And the lighter gray shading represents driveways or walkways, but this is still very high-level, very conceptual. What it's showing here is that the lots to the north, 34 Ridge, would be 100 feet by, that is, I believe it's 260 feet in depth. Shows that we have a very large building envelope still for that parcel. It's more than adequate to design the dream home that the Neils are after. So that's showing a footprint of roughly 45... I'm sorry, an overall house is 4,500 square feet at two stories high. But we have more than enough room to fit the house with a three-car side-entry attached garage, and great driveway space as well, too. So it definitely fits in the lot, and the lot can support that. It's actually more than enough for that house. And then we can also build another home to the south on 36 Ridge. Again, that rectangle you see, that's just offset from the gray rectangle, represents that building envelope, that dash line, I should say. So again, ample setbacks. We meet all the criteria from a yardage, front yardage setback, too. So these homes will all be aligned with the other established homes on the street. Then, of course, the 1A Norwich property to the left on the screen, to the west. So again, these are just showing what could be built there, homes that are roughly 4,500 square feet, 4,000 or 4,500 square feet, that are pretty much in line with some of the homes that are built in the area right now. And these are just some aerial views, just from the drone, suggesting you can see the overall size of that property in comparison to the homes to the left and to the right. That yellow dash line represents the footprint. Again, it's more imagery from the drone. So again, just to reiterate, our goal is to be complementary with the existing established lot sizes, width, area. Develop new homes that meet the context of the neighborhood, great architectural details, portions, massing, all of the criteria set forth in the exterior design standards. I mean, that's a great document. It will help guide the design for these homes, too. Streetscape, pedestrian-friendly, walkable sidewalks, and to preserve, as Chris mentioned, to preserve as much of the existing landscape around the property as we can. And again, these houses are not designed yet, but we do want to make sure they're complementary. Traditional design, traditional details, timeless materials, high-quality build, paying attention to all the details that really make the house sing incompatible with the neighborhood. These are just some examples. Some of these are within the community, obviously, the one on the right. And then we also understand that the Norwich lot's a little bit narrower, so the house might be more rectangular in footprint. But this is an idea of what that house could look like, too. Maybe more of a modern Tudor style, something along those lines. But again, still matching the same intent and quality of build. And that's roughly it for our presentation. We can answer any questions that you have. This is just a slide that suggests driveway configurations, but I think it's important at this point. So if you have any questions, more than happy to address them. Or Chris, if you'd...
Thank you, Jeff. And so to be clear, what we're suggesting for ourselves here is that the lot that would become 34 Norwich, or 34 Ridge, which is at the corner of Norwich and Ridge, would be the house that we would develop. I'm not looking to create a suburban development and put five or six houses throughout this entire footprint of what was the original 36 Ridge. We're looking to essentially allow, once we go through our building process with our house, allow people to step in and try to do the same thing that we've been doing, which is build our dream home on a lot of that sort. And so there's not, in this sense, like a profit motive to say that we would take a specific house and try to build it for the lowest dollar and sell it for the highest dollar, just to make sure that we did something like that. Really, we would wait for people to approach us and say, "We would like to build something on this," and kind of go through that process as we market those types of lots. And really, at this point, it's the goal that we have, to try to build something, that we can have a house that we can be proud of, the community can be proud of and happy that went through and was built. And also something that we can make part of the community, right? I mean, I kind of envision it as something where it's a great house to bring people over for the holidays, to have parties, to have people enjoy and experience, and just make it part of the community. I'm excited for our kids to be able to bike down Ridge, go to the community center. It's kind of a cool location. And it's funny, when we first moved to Royal Oak, we had already had our kids enrolled in the FECC. And so they had been kind of ready to go through their regular preschool stuff there. We thought about it, and if our goal was always to try to move back, maybe we would just stick through that. And Royal Oak school districts are good, Ferndale's good. At the same time, we looked at it and said, "Maybe we should try to continue with that." And so our kids are still at Ferndale School Systems. My daughter's in Miss Kathleen's class at the FECC. She's four. My son, our son, he's six, and he's in Miss Tobin's class in kindergarten. And we love it. We've made great friends, and we've found ways to continue to kind of grow our footprint in the community, even though we're on the wrong side of 696 at this point. But the goal that we have is, with obviously a lot of consideration from the, obviously, all of yourselves here, is that we'd love the ability to make something that I think everyone could be proud of. So I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what I'll do is open it up to questions for everyone here, and then if there are questions from folks in attendance, we'll go there.
Okay. May I start?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, clarification. For clarification, your plan at this point is only to develop a home for yourself. Is that correct? So 34. So the conversation about a potential house on Norwich isn't a real conversation, because you'll be selling those as empty lots?
My goal is to try to sell them as empty lots.
As empty lots.
In the meantime, we'll be maintaining the grounds. We won't send in tree cutting on all three of them at the same time. So if it takes a little while, they will retain their original look, so to speak.
Okay.
But the house that we would develop first, and really probably the only house we'll develop, would be 34 Ridge.
And in terms of the sale of those other lots, when do you think, or when do you plan, if this happens, when are you going to start listing those?
I would presume as soon as we have approval. And obviously, from a logistical standpoint, it is hard to put the lots up, even though they're not specifically ready, so to speak. And so that's obviously a hurdle for any possible buyer. And so from that perspective, and for expediency's sake, we'd probably like to try to start that all in tandem.
You also own 26 Cambridge?
I do.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, why the switch? Why the switch to Ridge?
Very fair question. So with 26 Cambridge, we had the opportunity. It was something that we thought about. Maybe that would be the right lot for what we were doing. And just as we kind of worked through different designs, and we kind of really got further along with the design languages required by the city and things like that, the type of house we were looking to make, it just... It was... I don't know if it's hard to get excited.
It wasn't the house you wanted.
I really wanted attached garage. I'm so sorry, but with the opportunity, like, I was like, "The attached garage? That's so nice, with our two kids. I can just kind of keep them in there."
Yeah, and that was, as we started looking through things, and we were building different designs that would fit according to the rules, we were starting to make houses we didn't necessarily like. And so at that point, we kind of thought about it, and we thought, maybe someone else can find a way to develop this lot, if at all. And we'll continue to keep it up until anything like that happens, and maybe we'll own a very nice garden for a long time. I don't know.
26 is currently listed for sale, but twice, right? You have the lot that you're selling, but you also have these plans.
Yes. So the idea there is a little more just real estate-driven. If someone approached us and just wanted to buy the lot outright, that's very, very possible. The difference being is that generally, if you talk to various real estate agents, and I mean, Jim Schaefer is someone we've worked with on a lot of these things. Walking into a new build on a vacant lot is a large undertaking for someone who's never contemplated it before. And so providing a builder on the side to basically say, "If you'd like to buy this, we also can provide some of the infrastructure to allow you to then develop this to your liking." And that's more or less why we've gotten Helen involved with that, just to ensure we could find a way to help individuals who are looking to actually live on the lot, kind of conceptualize their dreams. Because it's not an easy start from someone who hasn't thought of it yet.
And why do you think it's going to be different on Ridge? I mean, Ridge, it sounds like you're thinking, at this point, it's just going to be empty lots, but the same challenge exists potentially.
That's true. And that's the risk, I guess, suppose, we're willing to take when it comes to, I may have a lot of vacant land. You know what I mean? That's unfortunately the nature of it. And so from that question, I think, had we known that this opportunity at 36 Ridge would have become available, and something that we would be doing, we would not be owning Cambridge from that perspective. But it was just how it works. And we bought it in 2022, and we started working on plans, and it just, it never quite came to fruition the way we wanted it to. Because it was a carve-off of, not necessarily a real carve-off, but it belonged to the house next door as their side yard, and then they decided to sell it. And so Nate and Kelly sold it to us, and yeah, I think, we'll have to see. I remain hopeful, and I think it's very possible, that those things would transpire, and we'd be able to sell those lots and develop houses. Or the people who buy them would be able to develop houses.
What's your plan if we don't approve the lot split?
Well, other than work several more years. No, honestly, at that point, my plan for the approval of the lot split does not occur. Largely, I think we would then ask the Commission to approve the idea of fixing the back lot for Norwich. And so therefore, we could, because the garage will no longer be there. That kind of created the strange kind of angle of the east lotline. And so at that point, we would probably look to develop the existing house, like the existing lot in that size, which would be frankly, a very nice home. It would be a very expensive piece of land for me to do that with, but that would be the plan.
The plan of keeping kind of the same vision you have, or...
Yeah, we would try to build a house in the same idea of something that would match the quality of the neighborhood. I think the larger lot size obviously creates a very attractive home. It's just a lot of land. It's 1.1 acres, so to speak. I think it's larger than that if you include Norwich on the back. And so, I mean, my first house was 35 feet by like 110, so the fact that I went from 3,500 feet to was essentially a small farm is a pretty large undertaking. But that would be Plan B, is we would just develop the lot and it's existing with, and just rectify the back.
I have a whole page of other questions, but I'm actually going to open it up so that I'm not the only one talking, and so we can hear, but I might have more.
By all means.
I will.
Are there other questions from...
Or I could keep going.
Go for it. Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate you saying that you used to walk through Pleasant Ridge, and you loved the beauty and the houses and all of that. My first question, as you were talking and saying that, is, "Why build a new house instead of buying an existing home?" As you can see, as I can see, we typically don't have anyone in this room for a meeting. You have a lot of neighbors.
Oh, sorry. I thought you meant the build itself.
I mean, listen, normally, but you have a lot of people here who... And I'm not exactly sure I'm going to phrase this, but you have a lot of people here who also love the community and the neighborhood, who currently live here. And I guess my question to you is, what is your commitment to the people in this room, and what is your commitment to the neighborhood to be a good neighbor, to be not only a good neighbor, well, to be a good neighbor? And I guess my other... Oh, I had a catchphrase, but I had a few catchphrases as I was thinking about it. Number one, we're the ones living through the construction, right? Not you. Not you. And we're the ones living with these, not only the construction zone, but these empty lots. So what is your commitment, I guess, to your neighbors? You know, what is your, what is your plan to also make sure people don't hate you?
Well, it's empty lots or continuing construction.
I mean, I'm not sure.
One after another.
Right, right, of course. And you are going to finish your house, and then the next two, so it, you know, it's, and it is a heavily trafficked area, I mean, there's a lot of impact that this is going to have, in addition to the fact that you are taking down a home. So, so I guess the question is, yeah, what is kind of the commitment, or what is your plan with the neighbors and the neighborhood and the, you know?
Sure, sure, that's a very fair question. Well, you know, I suppose at the end of the day, the, the proof will be in the pudding of myself as a neighbor, but, you know, I endeavor to meet as many of you as I can, and talk to, you know, as many of you as I can, and I, you know, I, I love this community, and I imagine you'll probably feel that, you know, as, as we talk over the years. You know, my wife and I are, you know, we, we love this community, but we also want to be part of it. So we plan to be, you know, involved in, you know, community events, like, you know, the pasta dinner, right, over for the women's club, you know? How many, you know, communities spend, you know, the beginning of their city council meetings honoring not only a championship soccer team, but, you know, a championship butternut squash grower? You know, I mean, this is a pretty cool thing. And so it's a great, you know, it's a great community on that level, and I, you know, I want our kids to be involved, I want our kids to be involved in the community events, right? And so, you know, the fact that we're, you know, retaining our kids in the school, I think has been, you know, a key kind of step of what we've, you know, wanted to continue to ingratiate ourselves in the community. I know that, you know, we'll be working as hard as we can on our specific lot, because we, honestly, if I could have moved in last week, I would have, you know? And so I want to make sure that that side of it is done with as much expediency as possible. You know, at the same time, you know, with the remaining lots, you know, we, we want to try to get those moving, because I understand that, you know, no one wants to be right next to a endless suburban development, right, which is not, you know, our goal by any means. At the same time, you know, that's to, to undertake all three builds at the same time financially is exorbitant, and so that would be very difficult for us to do. You know, but I think, you know, with what we're trying to do here, you know, we can, we can try with our best efforts to, you know, allow these next lots to go on the market, and, you know, I hope there's people that are, you know, they're waiting essentially, or will start seeing that, you know, there's a lot that they can realize with, you know, a new build in these two different locations. And so, yeah, I mean, I think the, the, the promises that, you know, I can make is, you know, I'd like, we'll, we'll try to be doing things in as, as little disruption as we can, but obviously, construction is disruptive. It's, it's a difficult thing to do. You know, the team that I've put together, I think, is, my wife and I have been, you know, we've been through a build process before, and we know the things that we haven't liked about the people that we've partnered with, and we know the things that we have. And, you know, I'd say the project management skills of both Greg and Jeff are second to none. And if you look at the, the quality of the things and the size of the things that they put together, you know, Kierklaas specifically has built everything from, you know, in small individual, you know, kind of additions to houses, to remodels, to full new houses, all the way up to entire apartment buildings and hotels and all those things. So there's a lot of breadth of experience there. And, you know, same with Greg from a residential perspective. I mean, building houses of, you know, 10,000 square feet down to 2,500 square feet and everything in between, and we've seen that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I guess, professional wherewithal there. And so we'll aim to be as, as good as we can, you know, with timing and making sure that we're, you know, the city, the city is aware of everything it needs to be aware of, and we're not, you know, you don't have to hound our door to make sure anything that we're doing is actually being presented properly.
Just a quick question for you. The home that you intend to live in, have you finished the design on that, or are you still, is it still concept to you?
We are, we are working our way through floor plans currently, and, and really, it's, it's, you know, the, the nature of this type of meeting. We'll, we'll know significantly more, kind of the, the specific parameters of what we're working with at that point.
For example, I don't know if we can flip back, but if we look at the layout.
Yeah, so these, oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Or did I? Okay. These layouts are largely conceptual, but I do think that the design orientation of a three-car garage facing Norwich is likely, you know, kind of towards the back and that attachment style. And then I, I do think that anyone, you know, those individuals coming to the city council with, you know, their presentations for 36 Ridge or 1A Norwich will be, you know, likely in those types of orientations, because that's what makes sense, along with the rules of the city as well. And so that, that orientation also works. And so while those are largely conceptual, you know, top-down looks, but I think, you know, at least the, the two, you know, they're, that's pretty close. It's not, you know, that much different.
Part of the reason I ask is to just help people understand roughly how the homes will fit on the property, and whether you've more or less decided that, for example, an attached garage is really important to you, then it's likely to look sort of like this, or if it's going to be dramatically different.
I would say that the, the layout will not be drastically different than that.
One thing, we met about this earlier, one of the things that I, I noticed is the driveways look a little creative, I'll say it that way. And I know you're trying to work your way around some poles and some other things to come up, entrances into the garage and things. We might have some comment on that.
Absolutely. And we would gladly work with the city on, on those steps along that point, and.
And one thing that we might request of you is not to have a garage that opens on the front of the house, or attached to the house on 36, so that might become a restriction on that property, even though you're not intending to build it, we might require that house not to be built such that the garage opens that way, because most of the homes on Ridge don't do that.
Sure, I can understand.
Yeah. Things like that.
Okay.
Any other questions for?
Just went back to the commercial. So are you proposing to do it similar to then Cambridge, where you're going to have kind of a plug-and-play option if somebody doesn't feel creative, or like?
Yeah, I think, I think we, that, that is, that is essentially the goal, is, is can we, you know, provide a, you know, I guess, maybe not a package is the right word, but, but the right idea is like, there's land, there's a builder you could work with, you don't have to work with that builder, at the same time that builder is here, if, if you're looking to, you know, go that route. And, and then allow that to, you know, be marketed as such. And, yeah, if, real estate agents are always positive, so they tend to tell you those things, that, that's very possible. And so, you know, I, I remain positive that that's, that's definitely something that's, that's in the offing, so.
Were there any comments that people wanted to make?
Yes.
All right, why don't we open it up to comments? If you could just say your name and your address, and we'll have it for our minutes.
I'm the instigator of this group. My name is Marie Heiner Patty. I live at 12 Norwich Road, here in Pleasant Ridge. I'm a retired architect and construction project manager, recently retired.
All right.
The proposed design for making three large homes on what had been function, had been, though with a split, functioning as one very large property, is a significant impact on the language and the density of our neighborhood. Norwich is an unusual street, not the way it was when my kids were small, with not very many kids, but we have a lot of kids on our street. And it's a busy street, and they're pretty much free-range kids, they're up and down the street all the time. And the, the language and the character of the street is kind of dependent on that. Front yards are pretty much clear and open, kids play across property lines. During COVID, they, it was, it was like the Norwich bubble, and they were in and out of everybody's backyard. So we have an established family language on this property. This impact of three large residences, particularly with 34 Ridge fronting its three-car garage on what essentially is our front lawn, our front lawn line, is a significant impact. Pleasant Ridge's zoning ordinance does not treat side lots, side, I mean, corner lots the way many other cities do, which is that they require the same setback on the corner, on the side lot, as they do for the front, or match, it has to match the setback of the adjacent properties on that side yard, when you have a corner lot. We don't have that in our ordinance. So this design is allowing a significant impact on the look of our street. The, the property located to the north of Norwich, where the, where the street was cut through, does come very close to the property line, but that was a pre-existing condition, and here we're looking at creating three large properties that would have that kind of an impact right up against the property line, with oddly configured driveways and with large massings that are significantly different than our street. We've had some new builds on our street, people who were already living there, and we didn't want to lose them, so nobody complained when their houses got real big, but they moved anyway. But, so, but this, this language is completely different, and there are options that could be done with this that didn't have that kind of an impact, with these very large and unusual driveways, with a three-car garage facing Norwich. And actually, I'm more in favor of this being two parcels, that we put 1A back as part of this property, and divide this into two properties that fit and face onto Ridge Road, that's more in keeping with the language of both the adjacent Ridge Road properties, and it's, because there's very few of these 1A properties. And it's also, it would allow for the houses to be built in something that respects the front lot line, the front yard line of the Norwich, Norwich, existing Norwich language. And we understand that there was some possible interest in this house being part of our Norwich neighborhood, and that we've always included this corner property as part of our Norwich neighborhood for our block club and the kids and the playing, and actually, it functions as a soccer field right now. But again, we'd like that, we'd like there to be a language and a house placement and a sizing and scale that if, as these prob, not, not that we're not, we don't think this should be, not developed, but it needs to recognize the language that is existing on our street already, not just Ridge Road, because that's all they've talked about is Ridge Road, they haven't talked about our street, and this is an impact, so that the plan as presented, we're not in favor of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other comments?
Please?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City folks. My name is Chris Osborne. My wife Julie is here, we live at 1 Norwich. So we have dealt with, you know, not because we wanted to, but we've just dealt with the overturn of this property and not being able to be built, et cetera. Marie has spoken very clearly and expressed our concerns, so I don't know that I can really just continue to reiterate what she has said, but we agree strongly with Marie that this plan as presented should not go forward like this, with the driveway being on Norwich and the garage and everything. Additional concerns are with construction, which was mentioned, and, you know, kind of the upheaval that that presents. We went through that with number 12, when they redid the, the redo there. Quite literally, our house is the end of the parking lane for that side of the street, and we dealt with trucks and construction and people in our front yard and parked in front of our house for months. Additionally, if these are to be built separately, not all at once, then it's an ongoing process of, oh, there's construction this year, and it goes on for eight or 10 or 12 months, and then down the line, there's another construction of, you know, X amount of time. So to alleviate that, to Marie's point, to not have the 1A lot as such presented, and then returned back to the two other properties, would be more agreeable, as long as, again, property lines and the layout of the house and driveways fit within what the city deems acceptable, or, you know, fits within the, the codes. My wife and I, you know, we moved to Pleasant Ridge, like a lot of people did, walk in the neighborhoods and seeing it, we quite, quite honestly could have lived just about anywhere. We bought a fixer-upper, put a lot of time and effort into it to keep it original, to keep it historic. Historic society does a lot of work to kind of maintain the look and the feel and the history of the neighborhood, and we don't want to see that diminished with just, you know, because we can, to throw up, you know, a lot of big houses if it's not necessary. So those are my thoughts.
Did you want to say something?
Julie Osborne, 1 Norwich, I guess I just want to add that the question that I'm asking for you to think about tonight is whether or not, obviously, it's not a question of whether or not this plan can be done. The plan shows that this can be done, the question is, should this be done, to maintain the integrity and the history of our neighborhood? Well, and what we heard tonight is that the state of the city is good, we have a good balance sheet. So why, what improvements is this three new homes going to bring to the community that maybe it can't be accomplished with two homes that also provide more space, maybe saves a few more trees? We have a lot of wildlife and birds and deer in, in our community, and it will have an impact on them as well. When I drive through my friends' houses in Royal Oak and Birmingham, I see huge houses that have been placed on these small lots. I don't want Pleasant Ridge to look like that. This is a key part of our community, not only for us that live on the west side, but if you're coming from the east side and you're driving across Sylvan, down Oakland Boulevard, you're looking dead ahead at this lot. This is a really important lot, and this is a really important decision to make that will be long-lasting for generations to come. Our home was, we bought it from the people, the family that built that home, and we're really proud of that. And I know that that is a lot of this feeling, and I know every home can't be saved. I've been in 36 Ridge, I get it, I know, that, you know, it's not, it's not going to give you the today's lifestyle, but I, we just feel that it's, for this corner, three homes, going from one to three is just too much, and we're asking you to think about that, the why and what is the benefit for three homes. Again, as Marie said, we could understand splitting the lot into aligning with the rest of how, much more in common with Ridge, but again, we're just asking for you to think about that as you make your decision, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. The Elder Lenko.
That's true, that's true.
Tell me about it. George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park. So I'll be looking at this house, I'm three doors down, and you don't know me, but I was chair of the Historic Commission before I was a city commissioner, big into history, big into architectural preservation. I've not been in the house, but I've seen pictures of the house, and sometimes the value of the property exceeds the value of the house that's sitting upon it. Thinking of 21 Oakland Park, and there was a roomful of people when that came down, and I'd been in that house, and it was time for that house to come down, and the house that replaced it is a fine house, and they're fine neighbors. So I'm thinking about this more from a community perspective than from a historic perspective. I think it would be a net plus to the community, it'll increase our tax base. The other thing that people don't fully realize, like in terms of the water bills, how your sewage fee is computed by the land area you have, and it's like patently unfair to large properties, that they pay more sewage fees, I mean, many times more, even though they flush the toilets, just about the same amount as everyone else.
Stormwater runoff.
Oh, that's correct. Stormwater runoff, thank you for the correction, but even still, that contributes to the fact that the property itself is kind of a white elephant, it looked, it's looking for something like this. Now, having heard the comments about two instead of three, there's parts of the two instead of three that I like, and I don't know whether you all have considered this, and I don't even know if it's possible from, from a property zoning perspective, but if the Norwich property instead were access, back access to the two properties, so not a house on Norwich, but a double drive that services both houses, that could be less impactful to Norwich, architecturally stunning, and I can't even guess what the economics of that are, I mean, that's what you guys figure out. guess what the economics of that are. I mean, that's what you guys figure out. But, short story long, I would like to see two stately homes there, because 36th Ridge, even if you put infinite dollars in it, it's not going to be a stately home. It's just not. So, that's my say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Jay Forman, 60 Oakdale. A lot of my comments are already covered here. I just wanted to say, it kind of seemed when I saw this that there were going to be three structures built, so it's a little thrown off by the fact that it's just one. Maybe I didn't read it carefully enough. Two, to go from one property or one structure to now three, it's like we're building a subdivision almost. It's just too much. So, I'm in line with the two, build two homes. Make this unusable 1A usable. That was, we dealt with this 10 years ago, and someone tried to build on it. It's probably happened again since then, at least once, but it's just useless as it is. So, fix that, sure. Put a house on that, sure. As far as splitting the lot on Ridge, I'm not a fan of that at all. If it's permissible, I get it, but I just don't think it's a good idea. This house, when you pull off Oakland Park and you're coming off Woodward, this is the first house you see. You turn left, you turn right, that's what you see right there. And I'm not going to say that it wouldn't be beautiful. These could be beautiful homes, but the look and the feel that you get when you pull up there and you stop is just this feeling, me is just like, ah, comfort, you know? It's like, this is what this town is all about. Beautiful spaces, trees, beautiful homes, and just not all packed together. And I feel like this, you know, yes, it's a large amount of dimension there, and it seems like this all looks great on paper, but in reality, it's going to really change the look and feel of everything. So, I'm in the camp of, you know, straighten out that 1A, put a house there, and then just leave this other lot on Ridge unsplit and put one home there. The other thing that really jumped out to me, and Commissioner Shamir, you mentioned it, I think, is the concrete driveway there. I don't, I don't get that. Almost looks like a second road right along Norwich there. Since the garage faces Norwich, it's odd that the driveway wouldn't just go right on to Norwich. I'm sure maybe there's a good reason for that, but it doesn't, I don't get it. It just looks like a huge parking lot.
We may have overthought it. It just uses the existing curb cut, because you can see the house kind of winds up into the area. But, I mean, that's certainly something, you know, that could be discussed.
Okay.
Honestly, it was the, the driveway was less of a firm decision than anything. It was just to have something that's, you know, of similar orientation as to how the existing houses, because it comes in and then just kind of winds up the property, but obviously it goes a little more parallel at that point. So, I totally understand.
Gotcha. Just looked like a lot of concrete, and then we're talking about runoff and stuff, and that's even, that's even more runoff. So, that's where I stand on it. Just wanted to share my thoughts. Thank you for listening, and thanks for the great presentation.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Jamie Lyerly, 33 Norwich. Couple of questions. Not sure that the Norwich orientation of that, it says 36 wide, but then there's the area where it widens. I'm not sure whether that's been accurately depicted on these maps.
36 wide. Oh, the width of Norwich?
The necking that we have on Norwich.
Because it's narrow at the entrance.
Yeah, exactly. So, I'm not sure that that's completely, it may be. I don't know exactly. Second question is, during this purported period of building, will the slope that is at 1A be eliminated or remaining until it is, until that lot is built? That's unclear in what you've been saying, but there is, is some rise within that, that lot. Third, I think the garage facing Norwich is pretty awful, and there's some rear entry area there that I think would be far more appropriate for remaining attached, but far more appropriate and far more fitting with the rest of the street.
Thank you.
To answer your question about the Ridge, sorry.
To answer your question about the Ridge area, that, I guess, the risen area, is that what you're talking about, the berm? Honestly, I'd have to get back to you about that, because I think, well, we have a topography. It's not overlaid on there. So, I don't know exactly where it would be, but I, I would assume it's probably between the garage and where the proposed two-story residence on Norwich is.
My only concern, my only concern is, in this interim period before something is built there, are you going to rip that out, unload everything, and just leave us with a muddy mess?
He's such a big fan, but...
I like, I like the Ridge.
When the house comes, you know, the Ridge goes, but until that point, I can just see.
To answer your question, I think it would be, because the existing lots that, that would not be first developed, our, our goal is not to clearcut them, because frankly, you know, once you get down to the nuts and bolts of building a house, you may very well be keeping half of the trees. And I think, you know, that's, that's one of the things you truly can't buy is a mature tree scape. And so, you know, that should be up to, you know, the people as they build the houses. And my, my goal is, at least in our existing area where we have control, is to keep as many of those as we can. And so, yeah, I think, you know, I, I don't, I don't see us clearcutting and kind of smoothing everything out in preparation until there's actually some concrete work being done. And so...
Thank you. Were there any other comments?
Yes, if I may, sorry. So, back to the trees. I live right next door to it. I have for many years now. There are probably six or eight pine trees on that property that will, based on this proposal, have to be removed. And most of those are 80- to 100-year-old pine trees that have been in the community and the neighborhood for, you know, their existence. And that's going to be quite a, you know, quite a loss to have that just all cut down. I get trying to keep as much as you can, but again, based on where those trees are positioned, there's a couple of big oak trees fronting on Norwich that would potentially go away as well. So, we're looking at, you know, our property doesn't have any trees, because years ago, those big tornado came through and knocked that all down. So, we have zero trees. We like the fact that there's other trees at least nearby. With some of this proposal, that will go away. And that's just kind of a loss to have such big, beautiful, original, historic kind of trees to just, you know, come down because of positioning and space. The other quick note, too, is, and, you know, this is from a selfish standpoint, is we don't want to share, and I know it's already cut off, we don't want to share number one with a 1A on the addresses. I know that that's already been, you know, done elsewhere. Maybe at the time, they didn't, couldn't, you know, oppose that. And I would think that if this proposal goes through, that somebody coming in and buying the type of house that would be there and spending the time and the money to build it and develop it, so on and so forth, would not be thrilled with a 1A address. And likewise, the shared driveway space, again, I know that that precedent is set in the community. A lot of people have shared driveway spaces, but if this were to go through, we have the opportunity to not do that, whereas, sure, there's a setback for the power line, but the driveway could perhaps be on the other side of the house and some other, you know, assessment could be made to cut off more property off the other lots to do that. We just don't like the idea of being right on top of somebody. I mean, obviously, other houses are right next to each other, but we just don't like the idea of having the two driveways right on top of each other. We don't know if there's going to be dirt between those, if the concrete is going to be poured right up against ours and create one, because quite literally, the edge of our driveway is the property line. When we bought that house, the previous owners had an agreement with the original owners of 36 to come over the property line with the concrete a little bit to create a really nice kind of stately driveway. Well, when a builder and a developer came in and bought that and decided they were going to try to flip it, they didn't want any encroachments, so they came in and cut two feet of our driveway off, and we lost two feet of our driveway. Now, we're left with a skinny little slab of concrete that's breaking, because, you know, it can't be, it can't be replaced effectively unless the entire driveway was redone. So, we just have a lot of concerns with now having a driveway right on top of us and/or adjoining ours, and we just don't like that layout. We don't like that, the way that that's set. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of interest.
Neighbor Chris.
Neighbor, how?
Neighbor Chris.
Good to see you.
I live at 4 Hanover Road. My name's Dave Sherman, and I enjoy walking by your house on the way to the rec center. And one of the things I like mostly is that, that tree that kind of sticks out in the middle of the sidewalk, the oak tree that's, had been trimmed so that the branches don't reach the high tension lines up there.
Yeah.
And there's just one other tree that does that on the way to the pool. I like the pine trees that surround that property on 36. And when I was a kid, I used to have a paper route, and the man, paper manager would drop off the papers on the corner of Ridge Road and Norwich. And I always wondered why that street was so skinny, and now, now I see why. So, I've been enlightened. But at, at that same corner, there are this group of pine trees, and when I start, and then in front of them, there's bushes. And when I started doing the paper route, I really enjoyed, the little pine trees were like this big back, you know, 40 years ago, and now they're maybe this big, and they're, they're pretty high up there. And also along the fence or the border that separates us from the middle house on Ridge Road, there's a whole, it's looking like the whole property was once surrounded by these nice pine trees. And I like the smell of pine trees. I'm a retired engineer now. I, I left the city, excuse me, I couldn't find any freaking work in Michigan, so I moved to DC and worked for Uncle Sam for my career. Then, when I retired, I came back and bought my parents' house. So, that's how, you know, I was a paper boy. And I used to deliver the whole neighborhood. And believe me, back then, the neighborhood wasn't up kept as well as it is today, because back then, you could walk, you know, in the morning, I'd walk right up across people's lawns, the door, and knock the door, and many of the customers invited me into their house, or they, you know, to pay out the bill, have some tea and coffee. It was a very friendly neighborhood, but it was not as well-maintained, if you will, as it is today. And the other end of the house, under the block, there's a huge house that also sits up. If you look at Ridge Road and you're walking down there, the houses, you don't look straight, you kind of look up at them, because they're kind of majestic. Your house 36, I haven't been inside it, but from the street, it does have a nice presentation, because it's like five feet above the ground level of the sidewalk. It rises to, and I think it has a majestic view. And I kind of bordered the property, because I'm like on the, when I was a kid, I could go in my backyard, cut through the fence and go right onto your property to that corner without having to go the long way around, around the block.
Like through where they place the power pole?
Exactly, yeah. It's, I used to stay about in a tent in the backyard when it was back in the day. And I kind of think three houses would be a bit much, because I noticed that all the new houses come that have been built.
Okay. I found this on the web, for houses...
Siri was responding to you.
Oh, God.
They're, they're, they tend to like make the lot seem small, and you have like this big house. It's too tall, it doesn't fit in the characters of the neighborhood, the new house they built on Hanover Road on, on Oakdale Boulevard side. I've, you know, because I looked at the one that used to be there when it was condemned for many a year, and, you know, I kind of like stuck around, and I said, wow, in its day, this was going one hell of a house. But the new one they put on there, I'm sorry if the owner lives here, but I don't think it, I think it's too much house for the character of Hanover. But that's just, you know, I'm not an architect or anything. I'm an engineer, and I, so I look at things a little differently. But anyhow, that's my opinion, and nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
I think you got a hell of a house there. I mean, a hell of a lot there, and we'll see what it's going to be. But the other thing I do since I'm retired, I like making a lot of noise with my mower to trim up my backyard, because I got nothing to do. But I do like to just put my chair out in the backyard and just look. Look at your wonderful trees off in the distance, and it's just kind of, it's peaceful. The guy in the middle of block when I was a kid, he had this one that went up like forever. They cut it down when they, when they fixed up, when they, I think when they put the pool in, they cut it down. But that thing was like some freaking thing that went on, I don't know how tall it was, but I was just amazed at how they were going to get that thing down, because you could see it like, and so I'm kind of like a tree guy, even though I've been doing some tree trimming, mostly along the power lines, because I was fearful that a wind would come and blow, and then it would take out the power, because I think the power line has a big transformer on, on the house went by. And the DTE people came out, and they said, that's like the, the king transformer.
That's like the main, the main power.
Yeah. So, I'm like, so I talked to them, and they came, and they did some trimming. But then I went and trimmed it all the way down, just so we wouldn't have any power outage.
Thank you. I think we're going to give some folks.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. David Saif, 20, 20 Hanover. I guess my comment is, you know, I've lived here now 25 years. I love the feel of the neighborhood. I want it to stay as, the way it is as much as possible. I understand the new owners, you know, have a dream for a house. I guess my comment is, I'd like to see them have their dream, but I don't see the necessity of splitting the lot into two. I'm concerned that you're going to lose all the trees between 36, proposed and 38. I'm also concerned about the big large tree right in front of the current house and how that's going to survive under all this construction. I just think for the aesthetics of the street, it would look better with just one house, and we would save a bunch of trees, because I think at the end, if we followed the proposal for 36, you're going to lose all the trees on the south side of that property.
And when you say one house, do you mean one house or two houses?
The proposed two houses. You will lose all of the trees on the south side.
Are you suggesting a home on Norwich and a home on Ridge, or just one home for all three, for the total property?
I would suggest one property along Ridge and make the lot Norwich 1A larger, so you could build something. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pete Oravitz. My wife, Jan, we live at 4 Norwich. We've been there since 1996. I'm going to give you a little bit more different perspective. I totally agree with my neighbors here on Norwich Road about the development of the property, but be that as it may. We've lived through the development, I think it's 15, either 15, either 17 was split to make 15 and 17 Norwich, but we've lived through that development of that property. They have a long driveway also, and while that house was being built, I don't know about you guys or anyone else on Norwich, but we, my wife and I, were always questioning, where are they putting a garage? Where is the driveway? And that house, the way it's built, does not, in my opinion, fit into the type of houses, the houses that currently exist on Norwich. We then lived through the development of six Norwich. My neighbor's Kathy and Kathy Gillis, that was a ranch house, and we used to live, look out our windows, they had beautiful, eight beautiful pine trees, huge, just like we've described before. And when they bought that house, and they built the castle that's next door to me now, we lost all of our view down Norwich Road, both ways. So, I'd like to see, definitely the way that the property's going to be developed, I don't see them saving any of those trees at all. Likewise, I would not want to look down Norwich towards Ridge and look at a monstrosity of a three-car garage. It'll cut off our view, our view that we see down the block. We see cars going up and down Ridge Road all the time, and I don't think that would be a very good thing for us. The only other thing I'd like to say is parking. Even as we stand today, when cars are parked across the street from me in front of 1 and 3 Norwich, it's very difficult for us to get out of our driveway. So, if you had parties and whatnot, you were talking about, it just makes our life miserable, just getting in and out of our driveways. So, I guess my opinion is, I don't want to see that happen. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that had a comment? I think we got through everybody. Oh, maybe not. One more?
Hi. My name is Keith Cunningham. I live at 9 Cambridge. I've lived here for over 40 years. And while I can appreciate... And while I can appreciate that there are challenges with any new construction, I have never found any, anyone who likes change other than a baby.
Did he say other than a baby? Yeah.
I think what he said is nobody likes to be like change.
And I get it. You know, I, I do get it. So.
Thank you.
Sure, please.
And, um, so I absolutely understand because as, as someone who, who very much appreciates mature tree coverage, that is actually something that attracts us to the general lot itself, right? There's, there's a lot of those things. It was fascinating seeing the, the book, um, you know, of the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission where they put together all the pictures of the houses when they were first built. Um, and they were just tiny little, you know, basically saplings that have been planted and just see what's happened. Um, you know, some of the houses you look at and you go, is that even that house? And you realize because the trees have overtaken it. It's not even, you know, the same visual. But, um, I think, you know, some of the things that we're, we're open to, especially with tree coverage in certain areas, like for instance, along thirty-six Ridge, I, I completely agree to your assertion that the, the trees along thirty-six Ridge are definitely important. Uh, you know, the south side between thirty-eight and thirty-six are very important. They, they match, you know, the character of the area and they actually define the character of the area. Um, and so the, forgive me, um, you know, I think when in our, maybe we're a little, I guess, uh, we're a little gregarious in setting up a, a three-house proposed scenario. When truly what we're looking for is essentially the thirty-four Ridge scenario. Um, the rest of the lots as proposed are very much in flux. Um, you know, thirty-six and, you know, one A. Um, I would have no problem, for instance, unlike thirty-six, saying that we are not allowed to cut those trees. That's part of the design. Right? Where something like, you know, because I think there is enough room because they are close enough to this, the sidewalk and there's enough width in this house. That you could make it so frankly, as, as you can see, um, in that little green circle and, and this specific slide, we, we very specifically are highlighting that there is an existing tree there for the idea that we don't want to cut it down. And so the driveway moves around it as well as, you know, interacting with the sidewalk. Um, but, you know, the remaining trees, um, you know, frankly, we should have just overlaid the topography and probably done a little more from that perspective. But, um, you know, I think in the trees at the front of thirty-four Ridge, so for instance, the tree that kind of pokes out to the sidewalk. Uh, we've, I agree, I very much like that. I think it's, it's very cool. You don't, you don't see many trees like that. Um, and so our goal is to do minimal changes to the frontage of, of Ridge. Because it is, you know, essentially encapsulated by the existing tree line. Um, and so, you know, as we kind of get further along in the development, the design phase, um, I mean, truly my goal is to provide as much birth for those existing trees as we can. And there's some that just, there's, there's not much we can do about. You know, just because they're quite literally where the house would make sense to be. Um, but at the same time, I, I don't see as clear cutting in the sense where, you know, we'd lose ninety percent of everything or something like that. I only think we'd lose more than thirty to forty percent of it at most. Because some of that's just sitting where existing houses are. Um, or, sorry, where the houses would go. And so, but I, I'm, I'm very open to the idea that we could essentially deed in specific, you know, tree arrangements. That, that makes sense. Um, with, you know, whatever would be done to say at like thirty-six Ridge, for example. You know, the other thing for, you know, essentially the, you know, I, I absolutely understand that, you know, with the nature of the street and the view and things like that, um, it's, you know, it's a very stately view that you see as you come down Oakland Park Boulevard. Um, I would say that that one house in itself is by nature of all the other houses along Ridge, the anomaly. Um, you know, most, if not all of them, essentially have already been split over the last hundred years. You know, as this house was built in nineteen thirteen, um, you know, essentially, you know, all the other houses originally either were, you know, kind of an addendum to somebody, but they built in the middle of one of the sides so they could split it off. In this case, they built in the middle of essentially both. And never bothered to go through the splitter orientation. And so if you go up and down, you know, various, I think we're somewhere here. Up and down here, you know, essentially all those other lots, and these are large homes. Um, you know, I, my, my goal is not to build a, a very large box, um, that just kind of like dominates the area. Um, and I think the, the other houses that would be presented by other prospective homeowners obviously go through an oversight from the city commission to, you know, ensure that they're not doing the same thing. Um, but those, those houses that, that we're looking to build are not out of character, I would say, for houses on Ridge. Yes, they're out of character for, you know, several of the houses on, on Norwich. Um, but the, the two main ones that are kind of at stake here are the ones on, on Ridge. And so, I mean, the houses along that stretch, there are several houses that are getting up into, you know, the four thousand square foot range. And, you know, I, I don't want to build space just to build space. You know, I want it to be intentional space. I want to leave room for architectural detail. That doesn't just mean I'm trying to meet a square footage, you know, requirement for a loan or something like that. Um, and so I, I would say that that kind of, what we're proposing actually is bringing the existing lot. A little more in line actually with existing, you know, the condition of Ridge. It's just, you know, ours is a bit of a unicorn. So, uh, but I appreciate the comment for sure.
Please.
If you look at that picture though, you'll see that the rear lot line, the one A Norwich lot is an anomaly. Look at the lots on the north and the south of your existing thirty-six that all line up. And that B lot should be part of the lot.
I, I understand what you're saying for sure. If, um, we, we, do we have that? Do we have the one where it goes further up? So actually this one area of cloister of houses are all the furthest back. Especially if you go up, um, you know, towards Poplar Park and things like that, you run into additional, actually things that invade even further in. There's actually two houses. So there's like a one A and like a zero A Norwich if you go further up accord, along the different street lines. I, I do understand what you're saying. Um, yeah, we kind of have the longest stretch of those.
But even the optics of that along Ridge Road, you know, as you're traveling through, the homes will still be set back to match the other homes along Ridge. Even though maybe that lot's a little bit shallower, the optics, it'll still look and feel like it's part of Ridge Road from a setback standpoint. And we still have ample space to, to do that and to meet the home size that Chris mentioned. It just, it fills the fabric. It meets the fabric along the street, filling that lot.
I had one more, um, quick thing that we have been discussing is, you know, as, you know, if, if the house comes down and if any of these other things are going to be done, the sort of the restoration and maintenance of the areas. Because, you know, living in, in a construction zone or any of these things like this, this, um, it is a very calming area. You know, there's lots of green and landscaping and just grass. Some of it's, um, would you guys be committing to, you know, is that your vision? Is that, I guess that's something I'd want you guys to really think about is restoring um, space that's not going to be under construction directly during that period. You know, because I know like with Cambridge, I mean, we've gotten calls and everything and it's hard when there are empty lots. We don't always, you know, you're not there every day to really, you know, maintain it to the level that maybe a home is.
I apologize about the weeds that are overgrown towards that one tree. Um, you know, we, we hired, the same person who, uh, who does the, uh, the lawn maintenance for the house next door um, has been working that for us and we've been, you know, working together on that. Um, and, uh, and we, we definitely had a further conversation about making sure that that was more, you know, kind of kept at that point. So. But, um, I, I agree. I think that is our goal, um, you know, is to, part of the allure of those lots is truly the length it takes to get up to the front edge of the house, right? It provides a grandeur, you know, as you had said. And I think based upon some of our analysis of where front setbacks would be and things like that for averages, um, you know, as helped by, you know, with Jim. Um, you know, I think we would still maintain some of the element of the houses a bit up, you know, on the ridge, so to speak. Um, and, and I think, you know, our goal is to create, you know, a, a green space front yard, right? And preserve the existing tree space. Um, and, you know, it's, unfortunately with, with construction, you know, that it's hard to get away from just, some of it just turns to mud for a minute until eventually you can reseed it because you have to fit equipment and things like that. Um, but our goal is to make sure that, you know, when all is said and done, we've done a lot of quality landscaping, but it's not obstructively so. You know, it's not, we're, we're not trying to, you know, kind of limit the, you know, views as you're coming down, say Oakland Park Boulevard. And, uh, and I think given the scale and size of the land that we do have, um, the, the parking issue on Norwich, I completely understand. It's a, it's a tight street, especially right there. And then you only have so many years for parking on the street. Um, I think with the scale and what we have, it's more often than not that, I mean, we can have contractors parking physically on the lot. You know, I think sometimes when you deal with, you know, infill situations like further down on, you know, on your street in Norwich, um, there just wasn't that many other areas to be. And so being in the street kind of created that necessity. Um, but there's ample space in pretty much all avenues. And so we could find ways to make sure that, you know, if there's three trucks there for the sake of carpenters or something like that, that they're on property instead of blocking right of way and all that thing. So.
Mr. Buckland, did you have a question?
I have a question. Um, and I'm, I guess I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here.
Go for it.
But, um, and I'm going to preface this by saying that I, in, from a, uh, an analysis of the existing development pattern along Ridge and along the streets that intersect Ridge, the proposal is in keeping with what's happened. Uh, your proposed lot whiffs on Ridge are in keeping with what exists along Ridge on every other lot from the original Oakland Place subdivision. Even the fact that one A Norwich exists, um, is not, not at all unprecedented. Ninety-nine Elm Park is a hundred feet wide and was split off the back of the lot. You have lots that are along, uh, Cambridge, Hanover, that were also split off the back of those, uh, Ridge Road facing lots. So that said, and acknowledging all that, one of the things that was suggested would be to eliminate the one A Norwich lot. And instead have two lots split along Ridge. And to me, that seems like a higher value proposition for you than keeping one very large Ridge Road lot and having that Norwich lot. That's probably a more marketable and higher value split, you know, uh, somewhere in between.
Understanding that he's not building the house that's going on it.
Correct.
Yes.
Right. But still the land itself, the Ridge, two Ridge Road lots has more value than one Ridge, one Norwich.
Yeah.
That also presumably could, uh, solve some of the driveway issues with allowing for a rear access driveway to both properties using that extra one A Norwich space, allowing for better preservation of those trees that exist along the thirty-eight Ridge. So, you know, understanding that I, I, I see exactly where the proposal is coming from and how it is in keeping.
It's an option.
I guess, yeah. And I'm curious what your thoughts or opinions are about that as a.
That's certainly possible. I, I think when I, when I view the opportunity and what we're, you know, looking to, to do here, I, I think the, the, the size of a hundred by two sixty to me, when I was thinking about the corner, is, is already a lot of land. I mean, it's, it's probably more than I ever thought that I would have in a house that I would live in. Um, and, you know, and Ashley and I have been, you know, kind of thinking about like, what would we do, you know, obviously if, you know, this, this meeting did, did not result in a split and things like that. And, uh, you know, because it's very much possibility and we think about it, like utilizing the front is definitely something, you know, that we would be more keen to use. But using the, the Ridge related properties because, you know, then you can kind of, you can use the opportunity as, you know, something to build a, a more, even more stately home than already, you know, would be presented for just a split off property. I think the, you know, is, I guess a question for one A Norwich, is zero Norwich an option?
It's on the wrong side of the street.
Oh, you're right. Negative one doesn't sound very good.
Negative one.
No, no, you're right. That is the wrong side of the street. Okay. Um, yeah. No, I, I understand the, the naming nomenclature issue. I, I think it's something I suppose we could consider. I, I just, I haven't had enough time to consider it.
Yeah, I guess the question that I would have for you is based on everything you've heard tonight from us and, you know, from other residents. Is there anything that you rethink based on what you've already presented? Is there anything that would compel you to just rethink anything or you're pretty set on, on the split as you, as you described it?
Well, we like, obviously, I mean, we, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into getting to this point. Um, and so I, I would say that, you know, of our present, our proposed presentations of three different properties, two of those certainly are very much in flux for the idea of something that could be massaged to the city's liking. Um, you know, at the same time, the one, you know, that we presented is a little more kind of fleshed out. To the point where, you know, we're fairly sure that's an orientation that we are trending towards. You know, I would say that, you know, I, I completely understand the viewpoint down Norwich and, I'm sorry, down Norwich as you, as you look and it kind of changes the orientation of streets. And so, but I, I would say that in defense of that, every other house along that stretch essentially has some of that orientation. Um, and so, you know, if you look even, you know, for instance, I believe it's, it's Elm up there, it has a similar orientation. Where as you look down the street, it kind of bookends Norwich instead of allowing a.
There's a very good view there. That house, those houses weren't built to, to, to zone ordinance.
And, uh, and so, sorry, that, I'm, I'm sure is very true. Uh, the, the idea is though that there are several other streets that do similar things, um, where they just, and that's the nature of having a one main street versus having another street meeting in this corner. Um, and so I, I think, you know, from, from a split perspective, you know, this, this allows us, I think, to maximize not only our ability to build the house that we want to build, um, but also have some of the financial flexibility to do so. Um, you know, other than that, it's, you know, we're, we're building on a very large lot in the front of Ridge. Um, and, uh, and I think that would be our, our preferred orientation. Um, I think having extra backyard has less.
It's just less appeal for you. It's not what you want.
Less, uh, I guess utility in that sense than having maybe more width. Um, and so, you know, obviously it's, it's something I'd, I'd, we'd have to consider. I just, uh, you know, as, as it stands, that's kind of what we've been presenting. And I, I think, you know, we're not at the point where this is exactly what we're building, right? And so, but it's hard to get to there.
I'll, I'll offer my, my thinking. I may have a different thing, thinking. Um, I've heard enough this evening where I probably at least want another month.
Okay.
Uh, if only to consider what conditions we might apply to, um, to a split. Everything that you've presented to this point, um, probably works. You know, I don't see anything where you didn't meet, uh, the letter of, of what we've said in our, in our ordinances. But at the same time, there may be some conditions only to maintain the character of the, of the neighborhood.
Sure.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. They might have a different opinion. I don't, I don't get to, uh, make the motions. So they might have something else to say, but that's where I'm at this evening.
Sure.
So the suggestion would be then to table it.
I would, I would just table this at least for, until the next meeting, just to work through the details. That isn't to say that this wouldn't happen or not happen. It's just I, I, I think that there's probably some things we want to talk about just a little further. And, and you've very well prepared, so this is not a
I appreciate that.
A comment on your preparation. It's just, we heard stuff.
That makes sense. There's, there's a lot to consider.
And it's a, it's great for you to be able to hear officially from all your neighbors and to meet more people and hear what their input and feelings are too. So it helps all of us.
Sure.
I too would like more time to, to consider not only what you have said and thank you. I mean, I, I, you did present well and I appreciate all of the information, but to consider, you know, what has been put in front of us and also what everyone here has said also. And to, and to consider and.
And there's no doubt you'll, uh, you'd create a beautiful home. I think, I could hear from, from your, uh, from your words that you intend to create something that fits the neighborhood.
Thank you.
It's, uh, just going through the details and making sure there are some, that if we split the lot, there might be constraints we put on the other two or one or two or whatever we end up at.
We're absolutely open to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Um, because I understand. I mean, there's, there's variability here that's very hard to parse. Um, and so, you know, it's, there's just only so much I can promise upfront, right?
Totally understand.
I can't, I, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not coming up here as a developer and saying, I've got, I've got a plan for, you know, a nice polty subdivision. Because that's not at all what we're trying to do here.
Totally get it.
I just saw it and said, you know, I love this corner and I, I almost, you know, did something many years ago and I, you know, Ashley and I would love the opportunity to, you know, raise our family and, you know, kind of grow, grow old in this home. You know, I, I feel like once we're done with this, we will never want to move again.
I understand. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
I've got one final question.
Sure.
The driveway, just since we're kind of noodling, um, as far as in the comment about the parking, does it then make sense to keep the driveway as is, especially from the neighbor's standpoint, like to avoid having a surplus of extra cars?
Too much asphalt.
Okay, so the straight cut from the, because that, that, that looks right, but like just to kind of solve that problem.
I, I've actually considered, and I, I understand, I, I agree too much asphalt.
They could just as easily have a new shake drive like so, so many other houses on Ridge.
And like the Joneses, like, and, and like the H would have made a lot of sense, but just, yeah.
That is actually, it's funny that you mention that. Um, that has actually been a key point of conversation as we talk about that driveway. Um, it's saying that we could do you, um, in that sense. Um, and so we just, um, that is absolutely something we're very open to, um, to kind of eliminate some of that. Um, and I think the.
But that would require variance.
Right.
Right. Our zoning ordinance doesn't allow horseshoe or U driveways anymore, all of those ones that exist predate.
And, um, one thing about concrete though is I think we had thought, you know, the existing house has a very nice kind of like crushed gravel scenario, which I think kind of lends itself to the neighborhood. Um, that's, that's actually our preferred surface material, um, for that kind of thing. And, uh, and so, you know, I think it just depends on, you know, really the amount of it is dependent on if we could. dependent on if we could, you know, perhaps get a variance for something, but we figured that was a much different conversation for much later in the build process. Because I do think it makes sense for that lot. Because at Norwich, you can't park on Norwich from, for the house on Ridge, right? 34 Ridge doesn't really have parking along that or even on Ridge. And so having the ability to have anyone who's visiting essentially have some place to park their car off-street that has an ease of entrance and exit would make some sense in which, you know, I think our goal is not to, you know, create, no offense to 38 Ridge, but I understand there's a lot of concrete there and there's kind of a dais up front where people can park cars. That's not our goal. And so we're just looking for kind of usability in that sense.
So if we, if this body decides to postpone, it's not a no, it's just we need a little time to think.
I very much understand. There's a, there's a lot to consider and.
Not that I'm suggesting anything, but I'm suggesting something.
Yeah, Mayor, you answered my question. I was going to say postpone via, or rather than table. And Chris, Ashley, appreciate you guys coming in and being prepared and showing us your vision. And look, we understand, we all understand why you want to be here and that's great. We, we're happy to see that you see the same things we do. And I think you've had a chance as Commissioner Perry said, to just see, or maybe it was Mayor Scott, to just see the folks that you'll be, you know, living amongst. So we care a lot about our trees, the diversity of our trees. And you have to understand too, there are these unicorn lots that still exist that are one and a half lots or two lots and they're very special and they're unique. So it's, it's, while we, while I respect what you want to do with your own personal property, there is a fabric of the community here that we appreciate those lots for what they are and that they weren't split and that these are, you know, they stand the way they do now. So just to understand that. But we, I really appreciate you guys coming in and hopefully we can work something out. But, you know, I did have a question for Marie real quick. You said to, meaning the language was the verbiage you used. I was just curious, what, what would you, what would satisfy meaning the language of Norwich?
That the house setback, at least the front of the house setback needs to match or be within, I would say five or 10 feet of the front yards of the adjacent property. You require that on Ridge. Everyone's got to be within a range, but you don't, but our zoning ordinance, completely different from most of our surrounding cities, says nothing about corner lots. And we don't, we don't have any language in that. And we, and we should because that has a significant impact. And I, and pre-existing houses, that you don't have to worry about that. You know, the house on the other side of Norwich, it's eight feet from the sidewalk. That's, that was created by putting the street in. That's not, this is, you hear we're trying to create new homes and when you're building new construction on a corner lot, particularly where you have an existing language that you need to address the face of that house as something different than a standard side lot setback. So that would be the, and the language should be also, we don't want to see a three-car garage facing our street. This just, that's just not the language. Attached garages are anathema, you know, it, to a certain extent, because that's not the language we typically have in the city. But, but a three-car garage with garage doors facing the street, oh my God, it might as well be Birmingham.
Oh my goodness. As the owner of a home with a carport, I.
So just for clarification, when I first saw the plan.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Dan Riley, 3 Oakdale.
Yes.
When I first saw the plan, I kind of presumed, looking at it, that, and looking at the dimensions, that you had planned to essentially develop the three houses with those square footage, with those footprints and cadence the construction efficiently, you know, in a big fell swoop. Obviously that's not the case. I really understand the neighbors on Norwich and the setback concerns. The question, I guess for you guys is, if, and I, I do think two-facing Ridge probably makes the most sense, but in the event everything is compliant, can you condition builds on those lots below what the maximum is for the lot, the percentage of lot size? Because I'm guessing if someone's going to spend, let's say 350 on the Norwich lot, 550, 600 for the 36 Ridge lot, they're going to want to make sure they're maxing that footprint out. Absolutely. They're not going to want to stick with a 25 or 28% of the square footage. So are those possibilities that you as a body can limit, which may change the value of the lot itself if those are conditioned on a certain size? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think the answer is no.
Gotcha.
But to clarify, we already have, so on Ridge it's a 30%, tell me if I'm wrong, 30% Norwich it's 35%? So there are already constraints.
Yeah, I know what the constraints are. I've just.
For lower.
Because I think all of the quotes, all the quoted tolerances are slightly below the maximums, the way they're positioned in the document. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to go for it.
Go for it.
Last, final last.
Okay.
I just, I'm aware of Kriegerclas' work and it, just so everyone knows, like they do great work. So I, it's just something to consider. Yeah. Were you going to say something?
No, no, I was waiting for you.
Yeah, Mayor, I move to postpone item 10, the 36 Rotlidge split and 1A Norwich boundary adjustment request.
Second. Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you for everything that you've presented.
Appreciate the time, honestly.
Yeah. And thank you to everyone that came to provide your feedback.
Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, what you provided was great.
Thank you so much.
We all got the memo. First of all, you sent all the questions. You sent all the questions. Oh, yeah, you covered all of them.
Thank you. I have something funny to say to you. Keep going.
Yes.
Anything else?
Folks?
Thank you.
Yes.